...that the Planning Commission may have. Next, anyone for or against the request will be asked to come forward to the microphone and express their opinion. Each side will have a total of 10 minutes, a total of 10 minutes to speak. Plats, rezonings, revised master plans, street renaming, and tax amendments require a public hearing. And once the public hearing is completed, Planning Commission members will deliberate and render their decision. Planning Commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's requests are required to recuse themselves. Members of the Planning Commissions are Anne Clemmons, your truly chairwoman, Mr. Regman Tooth, vice chairman, who's absent, and Mr. Frank Cook to my right, Mr. Buddy Harbert to my left, Mr. Cruz Reeves to my left, Mr. Reginald Hawkins to my right, Mr. Reggie Dunn to my right, and Mr. James Reed, and, uh, and now it's Fred Cook, and Leslie Stone is absent. The members of the land use staff are Tommy Tyson, James Center, and Ms. Jovan Hines. Members and petitioners are requested to please speak directly into the microphone. The minutes are recorded for legal purposes, and this is the only way to accurately pick up the audio. Tonight, we have seven members, as I stated earlier. It takes, seven members are present tonight. It takes five votes to pass a motion. Because of the number of board members present, if you would like to delay your request, please let us know when your request is announced. Mr. Tyson?
The MAPCO petition has been withdrawn.
Yes, sir. So noted.
Okay. The first item is presented by Mayor Stephen L. Reed on behalf of the city of Montgomery's request for recommendation to rename Jeff Davis Avenue, East and West, to Fred D. Gray Avenue, East and West.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Want to thank all of you for the work that you do on the Planning Commission. I served on this body for three years, and I know that a lot of the work you do makes our job easier at the city, because you do a lot of the upfront work when it comes to things that are significant to the planning and zoning of our city and our community. Tonight, I come before you regarding the opportunity and the request to rename Jeff Davis Avenue, both East and West Jeff Davis, to Fred D. Gray Avenue. I think it's important, as we think about Attorney Gray and what he has meant to not only the city, in the state, but the nation, to understand that he is a native son of Montgomery. He is someone who grew up on the street and has spent his entire career at the forefront of some of our nation's most significant landmark in legal cases. Attorney Gray represented Rosa Parks during the Montgomery Bus Boycott and fought for the rights of people to march from Selma to Montgomery. As he left Montgomery to pursue a law degree, he vowed to destroy everything segregated he could find upon his return home. He is a man who exemplifies the best of our city, and I believe naming a street in his honor would be a reminder of all that is possible right here in our community. I believe it's past time that we honor someone like Attorney Gray, a hero who again hails from the city, grew up at 705 West Jeff Davis Avenue, and someone who has helped America cleanse some of the worst chapters in its history. When we think about his contributions, and we think about what he continues to do in his career even right now, and how he continues to give back, he continues to practice law, he continues to be an example, and someone who serves as a blueprint for those who want to help bring about positive change in our communities, I think it would be only fair, and I think really it was, it's overdue, that his hometown, the city of Montgomery, honor him by naming, renaming West Jeff Davis and East Jeff Davis Avenue after a native son who grew up on that street, Attorney Fred Gray. So with that, if there are any questions, I'll take those, I'll follow whatever protocol you might have here with the Planning Commission. And again, thanks so much for your service, and thanks for taking time out to get back to the city of Montgomery.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Are there any councilmen, uh, I'm sorry, Planning Commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, is the, uh, is East and West Jeff Davis, but it doesn't say East and West Fred Gray. Is it gonna be East and West Fred Gray?
No, sir.
If you don't, it's gonna be duplicate unit, 100, 200, 300, 400 blocks. You know, each one has those numbers.
What we would like to see named is just Fred D. Gray Avenue. That would be our request, and I think that there are ways to combine those from East and West as it relates to those addresses.
So you're gonna renumber the blocks?
If that, if that's what it would take, then we could do that.
Because if you don't have East and West, you're gonna have two unit blocks, two 100 blocks in east direction, two 200, 300, 400 in east direction.
Well, then, what I would suggest is that we renumber them. I think it's important that we not divide, that the East and West, um, you know, does not apply to many of the other streets in that neighborhood, in that area.
I beg to differ. There's a lot of streets that are East and West. Hannan's one of them, um, South Street, and, well, there's several of them.
Let me say this. If we think about this street, if it's easier to name it East Fred Gray Avenue, then that, I'm okay with that. If that's what it takes to get it named, if it's easier to name it West Jeff Davis Avenue, that makes it palatable to the commission and to the council, I'm fine with that. I would, you know, suggest that, um, as we look at the dividing, you know, there were reasons why some of those cities, why some of those city streets were divided in East and West. Do we have to renumber all of those streets because we do one street? Not necessarily. But as I look at the grid, while there are, West Quamwell, I see here, West Hanan, I don't know if that's on the street sign, maybe it is, um, but if that's what it takes in order to get the approval of the Planning Commission, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Reeves, it's Tommy.
Yes, sir.
We do the street numbering system for the city in our department, and we'll go back through it and look, and if it's gonna create a problem, we'll renumber it.
I've got one other question.
Sure.
Did you change the guidelines for renaming streets?
I'm sorry?
Did you change the guidelines for renaming streets?
Well, the council voted on an ordinance to change that. How are we going about that?
The council voted?
Yes. We presented, when we ran into Roblox last year, we were looking for a more efficient way to honor many people, not just Attorney Gray, but starting with Attorney Gray. And what we found was that our process was much more cumbersome than those in peer cities like Birmingham, Huntsville, and Mobile. And so we put together an ordinance, presented it to the council, and they voted to approve that at that time.
And when did that take place?
I don't have the, I don't have the minutes of that, but the council's voted on it.
Okay, the council approved it.
Couple of what? Okay, so it's been this year? So within, within the last three months? Within the last three months?
Do we have an ordinance or anything about renaming for living people?
I'm sorry?
For living people, for people that are still living? We can, that's not a problem?
No.
I mean, I know Rosa Parks and E.D. Nixon were both deceased when the streets were changed.
Yeah, that, that's not a problem. And if you ask my personal opinion, I prefer to give people their flowers while they're here.
Okay.
That, that's, but we don't have anything on the books that says that we can't, because we named a lot of schools and a lot of other things, parks and other things after people while they were very much alive.
Mr. Mayor, my, my question, uh, and I was looking at, it says that 93 letters were sent out to the residents of West Jeff Davis?
Yes, sir.
And only 12 responded back?
Yes.
Am I correct with that? And those 12 was no. Am I correct?
I think we got 12 no's. I don't think that's the only 12 that responded.
Well, yeah, but so, in our minutes, we didn't, I didn't see a number of how many yes votes that we got. That actually would be kind of concerning to me, that why we didn't get a number on how many people that actually wanted, people that live on that street or own property, how many of them would actually want that street renamed.
I want to say that we have a number of, um, yes votes that we got on that, and I'm sorry if it's not in the, in the letter, I'm trying to find that, that information right now. We got a significant amount of yes votes. What, what kind of impeded the process last time was the fact that, um, we didn't get responses at all. You know, a lot of the, unfortunately, a lot of the, um, people who are living in, in some of those properties don't always own them. And so when we're sending things off to another owner that may be out of town, or maybe, maybe live in a different part of Montgomery, we were not able to get the responses that we needed. But we've gotten significantly more than 12 votes. We got, I mean, easy over 50 yes votes, and I'm not sure why that's not any, but I don't, I don't mind getting that information to you at all.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause that, that would be, I mean, to me, that would make a difference, that the people that actually live there, own the property there, that they're in favor of it, uh, that would make a world of difference to me. I mean, I know if I lived on West Jeff Davis, I would want to be a part of saying, yeah, I want to change, or no, I don't want to change, and not having a number of how many people that actually wanted to change. And I see where they say six was returned undeliverable or for whatever reason from the post office, and maybe they were vacant properties or whatever.
Well, let me say this, and I, and I respect exactly what you're saying. Let me also throw, throw this out. I don't want, want us to get lost in the minors.
Right.
And, and part of this has to deal with, you know, who we want to honor in this city. And, you know, the first 200 years of this city didn't have anyone who looked like me as mayor. It wasn't, I always tell people, I wasn't elected because I was the only one who could do it. The circumstances came together, and I was able to do it with the help of the people. There were certainly others who came before me that should have been and could have been outstanding mayors but for the color of their skin. And I think when we consider that we want to be known as the birthplace of the civil rights movement, it's only fair that we honor those that were a major part of the civil rights movement. And we've done some of that. We haven't done enough of it. We hope to do more of it in, in the upcoming months and years. But I think it's important for us to understand that for whatever reason, um, there've always been obstacles to naming things after certain people who helped bring about change in this city. It's never been easy, don't expect it to be easy now, but I think it's important for us to really think about the contributions of an Attorney Gray, and to think about the legacy we want to have in this city, and the type of message we send by who we choose to honor, and who we choose to lift up, and what their records are. I'm a graduate of Jefferson Davis High School. Um, I knew who Jefferson Davis was when I went to that high school. I know the city or the school board is considering renaming that high school. I think it's time to rename that high school. I think it's the same when this relates to streets named after Jefferson Davis and others in this community. And I wouldn't want the fact that absentee landlords or people who may just be too busy this time around to answer a second question, a second set of responses, to keep us from honoring someone who was born and raised here, and who not only helped change, change this city, and helped make it possible for me to become mayor, but helped make it possible for all of you to sit together as a body. For without that, we wouldn't have that opportunity for this body to look the way it looks. And, um, I think that certainly we can get you the, the numbers of yeses that we have. Again, I, uh, I wouldn't have asked for it to be on the agenda if we didn't have the data. I'm sorry, I can't find it right here on my, in my notes, but that number was well over 50 in the first round. We just did not have the majority of owners respond, which is why we could not move forward with it, and we came back with a subsequent ordinance that if you did not respond, it would be considered yes. So that is also something to, to consider. That went out in the letter, that if you didn't respond, you would be counted as a yes. So there may have been those who were confused and felt like they didn't have to check yes, because if they didn't respond, that was gonna be counted as a yes as a homeowner or as a property owner.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission?
I've got just, Mayor, how many, do you know the total number of owners on both East and West? Is it the 93, or are there more?
I'm not sure what the number of owners are, Ms. Harbert. Uh, that's a good question.
How do we send it out, y'all? Yes, ma'am?
Oh, we're sending it out, I'm sorry.
So, total number of letters that were sent out originally?
Yes, ma'am.
Was 183. That includes duplicate owners. So if you owned three properties?
Two or three, yeah.
You got three letters. So when the guidelines changed, you didn't have to send duplicates anymore. It was one owner.
Okay.
If you owned three parcels, you only got one letter.
Okay.
And when you didn't respond, that was an automatic yes. If you chose to send it back, that was you saying, no, I don't want it. And we only received 12 of them. One was late, so we have 13, but he still met the percentage because of the number that we didn't receive back, because they were automatic guesses.
Okay, but the 93, is that the total number of owners?
That's the total number of letters sent out excluding the duplicates.
Right, but, but, but what I'm trying to understand is, is did everybody have that opportunity?
Yes.
And the 90, if I owned three houses and I got one, I still?
That covered the three parcels.
But, but it was, every owner on Jeff Davis in East and West got a letter?
Yes, sir.
Even though they may have owned two or three property?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So that, that answers my, my question on that. And then the only other note that I had when I first read this to try to understand, and I think, I think y'all are clarifying it right now. There was a, an instrument passed in city council that said, rather than this happening again, whether it be this street or any street in the future, that just because someone does not respond, we're saying that it's, it's gonna be counted as a yes.
That's correct.
Exactly.
And that's all?
Give me the logic in that, if you don't mind, Mayor. I'm just trying to understand the...
Yeah, so part of the logic was, you've got absentee land, landowners who don't, um, respond to surveys, if you will, and they only respond if it is something...
I, look, trust me, I understand that one completely.
Right.
But don't, don't send me something. I understand.
Yeah, so, so...
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, so, so the second, the second thing was, we had some that were family members who, uh, on, on the street who felt like they were for it, but another sibling did not want to respond, and that then impeded the process. The third thing was, um, that we didn't want the lack of involvement to slow down the city council or your input into making changes as they were necessary. So we didn't want someone just holding up the process because they didn't respond. And so the, the goal was to say that if you don't respond, then that is counted as a yes. So if you get this and you don't want it to be changed, you will respond as a no. And my senior policy advisor, Philip Enser, just corrected me and suggested that, or stated that, exactly what the clerk mentioned, that there was no need to respond from the letters. We did send out letters to every property owner, but you only responded if there was a no, and so that accounts, sir, for your, for your 12 no's.
Yeah, okay.
So if you didn't, if you didn't respond, and that, that's considered a yes.
Yeah.
But we accounted, the original, um, count before this ordinance was unfortunately table because of lack of response, we accounted well over 60 yeses at that time. And this time, we didn't ask the yeses to respond yes. Does that answer your question?
No, it does, Mayor. That was, I, I just trying to understand the total, the total process. Mayor, what percentage has to approve it for it to pass? For, for the, what percentage of the residents have to approve it for it to come to this?
Majority.
What's that?
Majority.
Just a majority?
Correct.
So we've got 93, and you've got 50 letters somewhere in your file somewhere that say yes. That's, that's correct.
Well, more importantly, under this ordinance, we got only 12 no's, so you take...
I understand that, but you have somewhere in your file over 50 letters that say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm in, I'm in favor of it, and I make a motion to approve it with the understanding...
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, I'm standing up with the caveat that 50 letters be produced and put in the file.
Just a moment, sir.
I understand that.
All right, just a moment. We appreciate that. Can we hear from the, uh, the community or the audience? In the audience, which to speak? Anyone in the audience, would you please come to the podium, please?
I want to apologize. This is my first time down here.
You just need to give your name, sir, and your address.
I had a hard time hearing.
Okay.
And I've missed out on a lot of what has been said. My name is Robert Yaley. I'm the owner of Yaley Building and Tile Company on 423 East Jeff Davis. I have another parcel of property right beside me that I own, and I'm in the process of closing a third piece of property, all right there together. I got a, I've received three letters from the city, uh, land usage, and I voted three times negative. I don't want to change the name. We have been there as a company for 75 years. We've done a lot for the city of Montgomery. We've paid our taxes, we've bought our licenses, we've been there a long time. I'm in disagreement with the process that was happened with these three letters. The last letter we received says, and it's signed by Mr. Tyson with the Land Use Control Administration, "If you are in favor of the proposal, street name change, there's no need to respond. If you are opposed to the street name change, please return this notice in the enclosed self-addressed envelope within 21 days of the date of this letter. If we have not received a response by Friday, August the 27th, 2021," this is where it bothers me. "It is presumed the owner approves of the name change and will be counted in favor." That's not right. And I don't know if y'all have received this, but I've got a copy here of the three letters. I drove up and down that street today for four or five times, and there's, the best part of that street is where it ends on Hill Street at Lily Baptist Church. That's the best part of that whole street. The next best part of it is where the interstate comes across. It is manicured and looks like Montgomery needs to look. The next part of it is Mount Zion Church area. It also looks as, as nice as Lily Baptist Church. The rest of that street, there's probably 20 or 30 houses there that are dilapidated, caved in. The city needs to remove those. There are potholes in the street. There's grass and trees, debris, there are abandoned cars. That part of town is shameful, and the city needs to respond to that, uh, in my opinion, more than disrupt that community and the street that I live or work on, uh, by putting up a, a sign. They've already spent a lot of money just producing this paperwork that's going out to ever how many. I couldn't hear the numbers on the votes, but according to this last letter, if you don't vote, you lose.
Thank you, sir.
You only, you should only get counted if you vote. If you don't vote, they can't assume, presume that you're negative or positive about it. Uh, I'm just frustrated with it, and I apologize, uh, but I just, along with, with, with all of that, it's gonna cost my company in the time of this COVID, which we're struggling to stay alive and stay on, afloat, it's gonna cost us about $2,500, $3,000 in time and money to, to contact and change stationary invoices, contracts, contact suppliers, 150-some odd suppliers, uh, subcontractors that I deal with. I'll have to contact probably 25 or 30 of them, uh, advertising.
Thank you, sir. I think you, you have exhausted your 10 minutes, so I appreciate that feedback. I feel the same way about them changing the name of my bank.
Ma'am?
Thank you for your time, sir. I said that. I feel the same way about them changing my bank.
Yes, my bank in here, and I got license to apartments, too.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate your testimony.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time. I'm sure I took too long.
Thank you so much, sir. Are there any other responses from the audience? Any questions from the audience?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
It seems like his problem is more with procedures rather than, than changing the, uh, the name of it, but, but he, he seems to have a procedural problem.
I see.
Yeah.
Any audience? All right. Is there a motion, Mr. Cook?
Move to approve.
Oh, oh, just a moment, just a moment.
One quick question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor?
He's right there.
Oh, Mayor?
Come to the mic, please, sir.
Following what this gentleman just, just said, I know that this isn't the first time the streets have been changed, but, uh, there is expense. Has there been any conversation about, is there a way to, to help or make it less painful? I mean, is there anything that can be done on that?
I, I don't think there's, um, much that we can do, because if you think about, you know, longer streets, or you think about streets that have commercial, um, businesses on them, if, if we decide in the future that someone should be honored by changing a, a longer street name with more businesses, then that would then put that cost on the city. Now, I mean, if I'm wrong, and that has been done in the past, and, you know, feel free to correct me, there are those who've been here with the city much longer than I have, but I, I don't know that there's been, that I'm aware of the city taking on any of those, those costs.
The C would do it. It'd be traffic engineering that would do it and place the signage. Um, they probably could use the council... They probably could use some council discretionary funds to do it too as well for the name change for the streets. As far as compensating a business owner for the changeover, not that I'm aware of. I know we changed Federal Drive to Dickinson Drive, part of it several years ago, and I don't think there was any expense for the private individuals. They were responsible for their own letterheads or personal stationery, changing that themselves.
Any other comments? All right, Mr. Cook, I heard you earlier.
Yes. I'd like to recommend that we approve this with the understanding that Mayor Reed has 50 yes votes somewhere in his files, and that they be produced. Other than that, I'm at favor of it.
I second that motion. Moving properly second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Tyson?
Yes, ma'am. Second. Next item is about Flowers and White Engineering on behalf of Peter Katsumbach, OPK Property Management, LLC.
As you said, Brad Flowers of Flowers and White Engineering representing Peter Katsumbach on OPK Property Management. We are requesting the rezoning of three parcels of land, as y'all know, right on the Old Tema We presented this to y'all last month, and during the presentation, I think it was noted, the package did not arrive to you in time, and we did not have the screenshot of what the actual development plan proposal is. We requested a delay. Mr. Katsumbach has met with the neighborhood a couple of times since then. So, let me start kind of from scratch, if y'all don't mind, and humor me just a little bit. So, what we've got is existing gas station on the corner that you can see in the area of the photograph that's there. We've laid over the top of all of that our proposed new gas station, fuel pumps out in the front for vehicles, and then on the east side there, we have laid out a section for diesel pumps for large trucks. One of the concerns that the residents in the neighborhood have was a secondary access. It's on the north side of that development plan, as you see there. And what we had said initially was that that was going to be strictly for deliveries, not for the 18-wheelers, as there's really not good access up and down that road for 18-wheelers to come in. So, we, off of Woodcrest Drive, so what we have done in the presentation that Mr. Peter have of the neighborhood, we have agreed to go ahead and take that drive out. We do not need that secondary drive up on the north side of Woodcrest there. When you look at it, basically, to be able to generate what is acceptable, convenience stores, gas stations, the feel that you get today is somebody that can produce an open-air, nice restaurant, excuse me, nice station that has all the amenities inside of it. And in doing so, you cannot get that in the building that is there. So, what they're trying to do is expand that building to something that will be able to provide food, provide beverage, provide snacks, whatever it is that you want, and be an open-air area that's not so closed in, that will be nice and safe for everybody in the area. So, that is the presentation that we've got right now, the rezoning request. The southwest corner where the gas station is right now is a B4. The lot to the east, the larger lot right there, is an M1, and the two lots north of the existing gas station are residential lots. And so, what his request is to turn them all into a B4 zoning. So, anyway, questions from planning commission?
Brad, is this, is that service station owner, is it run by the owner or is it leased to somebody?
It is leased. The owner of the property, Mr. Peter Katsumbach, is here now, but he leases that store out and has for several years. He did run it himself for quite a while, but was not able to take care of the other business that he had and run that one physically every day and night, and so, he leased that out.
But even with the rezoning, he would still be leasing it to someone?
I don't know the answer to that. Would you still be leasing this out?
I'm trying to figure it out.
Yes, sir. I don't know if you heard the question. He was asking if you would still lease it if you get the rezoning.
That is very good question. My apology for the previous meeting that I did not be here, but my wife was here, but the question is, yes, I will return and run the store.
You will return and run the store?
Yes, because the projected is the lease will be over within three years. So, the current existing here is very inconvenient and unsafe for everyone, for the neighborhood and for my customer. As you can see, the current existing, the canopy is diagonal 45-degree to the red light, and the neighborhood sometime went to not want to wait at the red light, it just cut corner go through and across the Highway 80 and wait for the red light, more east or west on Highway 80. So, that's it. So, eventually, all these years, when I running it, I was afraid that someone will get hurt because the neighborhood keep running, using that path underneath my existing canopy there as the access to the Highway 80 besides waiting at the red light.
So, your intentions are to upgrade the station and the property? Upgrade it, modernize, for lack of a better word?
Modernize, that's correct, and I will run it.
And you take back over the actual data?
Yeah, I will take back over, because, to be honest, I do not quite happy. I have conveyed many concerns of the neighborhood. I have met with the associate president a few times. I have told and asked him, these are the concern of the neighborhood. And, you know, like, for example, they're concerned about the lot not being pressure-washed, and he said he did. He, in a check, he has pressure washer inside the store, and he said about the trash. And he said he did the best that he can. He employ, his employees are from the neighborhood. The people who maintain the yard are from the neighborhood. And the two parcel in the back, the person who maintained it does not have lawnmower. I gave my lawnmower, commercial zero turn, $8,000 for him to maintain it. And when I ran it, I was a member of the association, and I'm sure Mr. Dumas, back then he was the vice president, can confirm that. I gave gas to any neighbor who want to beautify or cut grass in front of lawn. I was participated in that when I was running it, and I kept it clean. So, and I think the...
Not to try to, I apologize for interrupting you, but there was a comment made somewhere last time about the station, it was not very well maintained, and that's the reason I was asking you.
I see.
For, under the present situation, it's not very well maintained. I didn't, I just heard that. I didn't make, you know...
I asked, his name's Simon, SNK Inc., who run it. I said, he said he three, might be one at one point in 2000 because due to COVID, he had to shut down for over a month or so. I think probably during that time, it's no maintenance, probably trash overflow probably at that time. And since then, he said he did his best to maintain and upkeep, clean the trash. And I told him, you have to do more. You have to go, if you see the trash, tell Ronnie, he's the person from the neighborhood who works for him, go, need to go over there and pick it up. I tried to call the street as well, like I had, like I did when I ran the store. I did convey that clearly, specifically.
But that's changing anyway if you get it rezoned, right?
Right, it's going to be changed. I will, it's every interest of mine to put that kind of investment in and to keep my business establishment clean and safe. So, that's the only thing I have, my investment. So, I'm willing to protect it and keep it safe. And at the meeting, they point out what happened if loitering and some other people, I would say, from South Boulevard wouldn't come and hang out, soliciting, begging for money and some other activity. They why allowed it? No, of course not. I will not allow it. If not moved, I will call police. So, that, it's the only thing I can do within the law, that I keep it moved.
Well, I appreciate you answering the question. So, that's not going to be an issue, is what I'm hearing you say.
Right, that's, I can't assure you that.
You're taking it back over, you are remodeling, reviving the property, and you'll be the responsible party again out there.
Yes, because I will run it myself, because I do not trust the lease C at present time. I feel that I did not do according to the lease. I don't feel like, because it's not, it wasn't looking like that when I left. The pond was new, everything else, everything's new when I left.
All right, well, that answers my question, and I thank you very, very much for that, for those comments.
Any other discussion from the commissioners? Is there a concern, questions from the audience? Please come to the mic, state your name, and if it, I'll see how many people come.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Demetrius Pruitt. I am Woodcrest Improvement Association's president. The last time that we were here, you all asked us to go back and have communications with the owner due to the fact that he had not come to us and told us what, you know, he was planning to do. On this past Sunday, he and I and our executive committee had a meeting, and I asked Pete to actually come to the meeting this Wednesday that we had with the community, because he could not give us exact measurements, a lot of things. It was just a lot of uncertainty to what he was saying, and I couldn't understand exactly what the plan was for the store. So, on Wednesday, when he came, he was better versed. He could tell us how far he was going to move the store and exactly what it was that he was planning to do. As you can see on the map, one of the things that we had a problem with was that second cut, but I hear since then, he says that that can be changed. But there's another problem, was actually several problems that pose a problem to us, and the first one is his actual parcels will actually butt up to our park. And we have children, very small children, women walking, elderly women walking. And then, the second problem that we had was the retaining pond that's on there, and it is actually going to face, was actually on the side of our entrance coming in. And when we asked him, what was the reasoning for that retaining pond, he told us that it had something to do with the current codes that convenience stores had to have for environmental purposes. I had not heard that.
Current what? I missed it, I'm sorry.
He said that the retaining pond that's going to be...
Retention pond, yeah.
Retention pond, thank you, I'm sorry. He said, due to environmental purposes?
Right.
That it was a requirement?
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we felt that that was a problem, because it will be coming into our entrance. That's not a sightly thing to see. We already have problems now with a lot of debris that comes from his store. I heard him say that his lawnmower is being used as of now to help do some cutting in our neighborhood. The city maintains our neighborhood lawn, and then we have a beautification committee that walks that area, cleans it, and keeps the entrance in front of Woodcrest clean. There's no one that steps over from his store to even help us with the trash that's coming from his store. Also, another problem that we have is, and I think we might have stated it before, the different businesses that comes over, and not only do they hang around at the store, but they come to our parks in different places, and they leave a lot of their trash, and, you know, they fellowship and all of that there. And that has not been controlled. The store is in awful shape, and I know that he is doing his best. I mean, we do know that there are some things that he has to do. I mean, a lot of us, you know, feel that, we know that this is his property, and we know that there's going to be something put there, but we just do not want an extension of that store. There's a service road, if you pay attention to the map, that runs east and west of Highway 80. He says that he's going to have that service road also as a way for traffic and different things to come in. It's already a problem with a lot of accidents there at that intersection. So, my problem was, and I don't know if anyone else paid any attention, right where he's talking about making that addition, there's also a somewhat of a cut that goes across Highway 80 instead of going to the traffic light where Sunday dinner and all of that is, there's a cut. So, that poses another problem for people to just jet across and, you know, just do unnecessary turns and different things that, you know, would pose a problem for us. But the most concerning thing that I have with this is then, and I know he's a businessman, but we have vested in our property. I am a second generation. My dad was a Vietnam vet. My mother was a teacher. They worked hard for what we have in Woodcrest. And all of us are in agreeance, and I think he would feel the same way if it was a convenience store being put on the corner of his neighborhood. Probably if it was somewhere else on Highway 80, it wouldn't be a problem, but it's at the very entrance of our neighborhood, and that's a problem. We have all these people here from Woodcrest, first, second, first and second, and maybe even some third generation. So, that lets you know how much we love our neighborhood and how much we value our homes, how hard we take care of our homes. And so, I really want to have a working relationship with Pete if he's going to be there, but we just do not want the expansion under any circumstances because of all the havoc that it's going to bring to having extension there.
Thank you very much. Are there any other? Pretty much you represent it very well, ma'am. Thank you so much. Any other questions, concerns from?
Somebody else.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Her, please come. This lady here, please, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Barbara Mosley, and I spoke last time. On the diagram, the first cut is already there on Woodcrest Drive. People entering Woodcrest Drive have to watch out for people coming in and going into the gas station. So, you're on Highway 80, you're making your turn, we're in the decelerating lane, U-turn, then there are people coming in and out of that cut. On the diagram, what's not indicated, it looks permanent, but it is not there yet, is the second cut. The second cut, if you go down there, you'll see tractor-trailer images, diagrams of tractor-trailer turns there. Somewhere by that cut and the retention pond is the tennis court. The numbers, the number of feet that they said this property would back up did not, wasn't clear yesterday regarding whether or not that retention pond is going to be there and where the tennis court is. and where the tennis court is. It appears the tennis court is going to be somewhere in between. And the other part is, if the tractor-trailers can't really turn, why do they need two entrances off of Woodcrest Drive which interrupts all of us coming into our homes? If they close off those two entrances, they still have two entrances on Highway 80. The first one directly in front or the side of the store with the double arrows, and the second one that's indicated going to the service road. If they're moving the store east by 65 feet, then they're moving, I don't know, are they leaving that particular wall? Are they just expanding the store? Or are they moving the entire store 65 feet? Because those two cuts don't need to be there if that's the back door of the store. The loading and unloading is on that second cut. They have two entrances that are already there from Highway 80.
Ma'am, they took the second cut away. That's, he's already said that.
We don't know from the design yet.
He's already said that.
I heard him say that, but he brought that yesterday, and it didn't appear temporary. It wasn't dashed, dotted, diagonal. It appears to be solid. And for that reason, I'm not comfortable that it won't happen, because it's on a plan. You hand it to the person who's going to do the work, architect or builder, they're going to go with what they see. So, until we get a new redesign, we don't know for sure what's going to happen. And if they already have two entrances and exits, one for the service road and one for the entrance directly off of our deceleration lane, they don't need the other two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, and that's it? All right, someone left their phone at the podium. She's coming to get it. Ma'am, would you just give your name and your address?
Thank you so much. My name is Janice Black. I did speak on last month's meeting, and I have additional concerns since then. One of my concerns was, by the way, I am opposed, and with the rezoning, with the simple thing of my taxes, because if we're going to rezone, who's going to absorb waste management, the sewers, the maintenance, the drainage, the diesel disposal? That does concern me. I am married to a first responder, and I need it quiet. After he works a 16-hour day, four days a week, I don't need all of this energy at the entrance. So, not only am I concerned about what's going to take care of the disposal of the diesel films and that, I'm concerned about the noise level. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission, questions, concerns? All right, sir, would you like to add a rebuttal?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things that I heard in there. One of the latest ones was about the tennis courts in the upper parcel. If you go to an aerial photograph and it's not on that one, because it didn't go far enough, it would have been way out of the screen. That tennis court's roughly 400 and plus, 500 feet north of us, nowhere near any of this property. The detention pond that we've got right there is required, as all of y'all are well aware, for development like this. The pond design right now has not been finalized. Obviously, we've not gone through that. But the intent is that it would be a dry pond with very gentle banks, that everything could be cut, would not be a wet pond for liability reasons, and obviously, trash reasons that would be floating in a pond or something like that. So, the intent is a grass lawn with a flat, gentle slope bottom that can be cut. She talks about the condition of the station right now, and doesn't want to see a new station, but they want to upgrade the station. So, we're getting into a point of throwing good money against bad. Right now, that station's not to be upgraded. And to be very feasible, to be honest with you, to maintain the current status of what you really look for for a gas station and what people feel comfortable with. Oh, there's the gas sta, I mean, the tennis court's right there. You can see there's two more parcels between us and them, and those are 100 and plus foot lots, so, anyway. The lawnmower, nobody ever mentioned that we were cutting the neighborhood Woodcrest stuff. He just said he loaned it to the guy to cut his two parcels up there. I don't think there was ever any intention of that. Trying to think if there was anything else. And, you know, here's the thing, if it comes down to it, and they're concerned about the upper lot that we're trying to rezone, and we need to take that out, if you go back to my site plan, if you'll scroll that back down, we can pull the zoning down tremendously. As you see, we barely encroach into that. I can pull the zoning down. If we had to, we could take that lot completely off. Do I want to? No, because I'd like to use that for some of my stormwater area in that area, which would not be a nuisance by any stretch of the imagination. But if I had to, I could. I'm going to throw that out there at you. I don't want to, but we're trying everything we can to be good neighbors, to create a store that is safe, that is functional, that everybody wants to go into. And so, I'll leave it with that. Mr. Peter, if you've got anything else to say?
Ms. President, you came up the first person. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Could you come again and let me know if you understand what he is proposing as an alternative?
I've got a quick question, though.
Sure.
Brian.
Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding you, are you saying that the station that's there now is going to be taken down completely?
Demolished.
That this is a new, I mean, the facilities, you've seen them, I mean, for some reason, these type of things are going on very frequently around Montgomery and other cities and...
Right.
But it is a total upgrade to what is there now?
So, everything...
Lighting, everything.
Everything on that site will be completely demolished. They'll take it down, take the gas tanks. More than likely, the gas tanks will have to come out, depending on their exact location, but everything on that site will basically be gone. And then, they'll start from scratch with new building, and there will not be any expansions or anything of that nature.
Will not be what?
No expansions, it's all gone.
Of the existing.
Right, everything, everything that's there is gone. It won't be just an expansion of the existing.
No liquor being...
It's going to operate the same as it is right now. There's, he doesn't have a liquor license now, and if he had to, if he were to request a liquor license, he'd have to go through counsel, and I don't see that passing. I'll just be 100% honest with you. So, it's going to be what it is.
Is there any trucking there now?
Is there trucking?
Yeah.
No, sir, there is no trucking there. There are, do what now? Delivery trucks, yeah. You get the delivery trucks in there, but not the trucks like you're seeing on...
Not 18-wheelers.
That's what he said, 18-wheelers.
Oh, the other thing that was mentioned was that lower drive, it goes and stops at the front of the property. That is a DOT access road right there. We've spoken with DOT, and they will work with us to help get that in right there. So, that would be a cut, and that's the anticipation of all 18-wheelers. That will be the preferred route for them, and so, that's where everybody will be directed to come in, as you see, and make the turn and then back out.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. I understand what it is that they're trying to do. All that we're requesting is, is that the three parcels or two parcels that he's trying to make an addition, you know, to the store with, we just don't want to see those additions. If he wants to rebuild, tear down and rebuild on the lot that he has, that's fine. If, you know, even if possibly, if it gets to the point, if that's, you know, not enough, you know, for him, if, you know, Woodcrest has to buy that property back, I mean, we're willing to do whatever is necessary to keep things at a minimal.
Thank you. Any others? Commissioners, any? All right. Motion is in order. We don't hear a motion. The motion fails.
The third item is presented by Lat. 32, Inc., for the City of Montgomery. It's a request for final approval of Cypress Inlet Platte Number 1 on the south end of Lafayette Street in a T5 Smart Code District.
Hello?
Yes.
Lat. 32 could not be present today. I am Lois Cortell, representing the City of Montgomery. This is the Cypress Inlet Platte. By getting the platte and the legal description, it would allow a property transfer back to the City of Montgomery.
Who owns the property now?
Currently, the property is owned by Elsa J. North Inlet. It's a division of the Marjam Company. The owner, Mark Buller, has, will be donating the property back to the City of Montgomery. We had initially sold this to them with the intention that we would be putting in a trail connection along the inlet up to Lafayette Street. So, this is, this is coming through with that obligation that was part of the transfer when we sold the rest of the property.
Any other questions? Comments? Anyone from the audience wish to speak or have a question? Motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving properly, second. All those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item is by Barrett Simpson, Inc., on behalf of Park Crossing 1 LLC. Request for final approval of Jubilee Platte Number 1 on the north side of Park Crossing, 1350 feet west of Wraith Orange Road, it's a PUD district.
Good evening. Blake Rice with Barrett Simpson. You have before you tonight a final platte for a 56-lot, single-family subdivision, Phase 1 of three that came before you, I believe, last year for revision to the master plan of the area. Construction is close to being 100% complete, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commissioners? Any question from the audience? A motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving properly, second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
The next item is by Turner Surveys, LLC, on behalf of Tower Source. Request for final approval of Love and Faith Ministries, Inc., Platte Number 1 on the west side of South Court Street, 115 feet south of West Delano Avenue. It's a B4 district.
Do I go ahead into it, or do I say my name and address?
Your name and address.
Okay. My name is Andy Loeb. I work with Tower Source. The address is 1080 Holcomb Bridge Road, Roswell, Georgia, 30076. I represent Tillman Infrastructure, who has executed an option-to-purchase agreement with the land at 3824 Corp. Street. The portion is currently not being used, and is basically just a flat piece of pavement with some grass towards the back of the lot. The owner is Love and Faith Ministries, and the agreement was executed by Pastor Hale. Part of the option is to get the platte recorded. Once the platte is recorded, the option is completed.
What do you plan to do with it?
There will be a cell tower constructed there.
Any other questions? Any comments, questions from the audience? The motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second. Moving properly, second. All those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is by Turner Surveys, LLC, on behalf of Tower Source, requesting final approval of Love and Faith Ministries, Platte Number 1 on the west side of South Court Street, 115 feet south of West Delano Avenue, a B4 district.
We just did that one.
That's what I thought.
Should be number six.
Number six.
Missed one, number six. Alabama Land Surveyors, Inc., on behalf of S&amp;S Eagles, LLC. Request final approval of Roeheny Platte Number 1 on the northeast corner of Mobile Highway and West South Boulevard. It's a B3 district.
Hi, my name's Dustin Aldridge with Alabama Land Surveyors. What we're trying to do is a, I shouldn't say a vacant site now. If you look at it, it used to be hotels, and they tore them down, except the one remaining that he wants. If you can see the brown roof right there, that's going to stay. He wants to, he's in the process of refurbishing it now. And his ideas are to sell the pads, but it's not in firm agreement, but to put like climate storage on the existing pads out there, or it could be anything.
Any questions from the commissioners?
All we're trying to do here, though, is just get it replatted.
I'm sorry?
This is just a replat. You're not doing any kind of rezoning right now. This is just a platte.
No, no, it's one, it's just a replat of one big parcel into several parcels.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Questions or comments from the audience? Please come to the mic and state your name and your address, sir.
Roger Thornton, resident of West Montgomery. Is there a purpose behind the replating to change it from one to three? Is there an intention in the future to do something with that for that purpose, or is this just for money?
No, it's to, the purpose, to develop it in the future.
Don't to the mic.
Develop.
I'm sorry.
His intentions is to sell it to developers, you know, for, like I said, he's in negotiations right now with a climate control, you know, unit using an existing pad. Now, the other lots, you know, he wants to sell off. His purpose is to really, he wants to upgrade that area right there. And he's very aggressively marketing it.
And the hotel is going to stay?
Just, just about one hotel right there.
Okay.
It will have access where the old chicken shack is, right there at the bottom.
Yes, sir.
And it'll come up there and just go around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Concerns? Go ahead.
No, I don't have a question.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving properly, second. All those in favor? Any opposition? None heard, motion passes.
Thank you.
The next item is by Goodwood Mills in K-wood, on behalf of Montgomery County Commission, requesting final approval of Montgomery Industrial Park, Platte Number 11 on the north end of Industrial Park Boulevard. It's a M1 district.
Good evening, Commissioner. Cedric Campbell with Goodwood Mills in K-wood here, on behalf of Montgomery County Commission, requesting final platte approval for Montgomery Industrial Park, Platte Number 11. This will be an extension of Industrial Park Boulevard, a little short extension in the plating of a lot for a new facility.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions from the commissioners? Any audience? Is there a motion? The motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Moving properly, second. All those in favor? Motion passes. All opposed? None, hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Next item is Engineering Design Group, LLC, on behalf of the Equal Justice Initiative, Inc., requesting final approval of EJI East Jefferson Platte Number 1 on the northeast corner of East Jefferson Street and North Court Street. It's a T5 Smart Code District.
Yes, Curtis Eatonen here, requesting platte approval. EJI bought the entire block. It was the former Bear Lumber Company, as well as the Handy Appliances or Handy Electronics Store. So, those buildings have been torn down, and we just want to replat into a single overall block.
block. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions on the?
This is hard to believe, the Bear was sitting on a bunch of different properties that wasn't even planted.
The Bear was one property, and then the Handy building in the corner was a separate parcel, just a small corner parcel, so.
You got them down and out in a hurry.
Any other questions? Concerns? Anyone from the audience? The motion is in order. Second. Moving properly second, all those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Next item is by James Bennett B. Tops Landscaping, Inc., requesting to rezone one parcel of land containing two point five seven nine acres on the north side of Alton River Parkway, some seven hundred feet east of Lower Wetumpka Road from R sixty-five S to B two.
Petitioner present? Petitioner's not present. Next item, sir?
Next item. Kimberly Jones, on behalf, on her own behalf, requesting to rezone one lot at four fifty Ann Street from O one to B two.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Jones, and I have been a cosmetologist in Montgomery for twenty years. Ten years ago, I owned a salon in the Mulberry District, and so I've decided that it was time for me to get another salon. I came across the property on Ann Street, and I purchased it last, last April twenty twenty, in which I've revitalized it, and I am wanting to call it home for my new salon. There are a lot of other salons in the area and other smaller businesses in the area, and so I'm asking for the rezone of my property to be requested. Any questions?
And you didn't rezone it when you bought it, or tried to?
No.
What is the land use stance on this rezoning? Clarification? I see traditional neighborhood.
Right. I don't know what that term means.
Yeah. It used to be a car, it used to be a car lot there?
Yes, it was previous. I was told from Ms. Tanya Ingram that it was a car lot there for eight years, and it has been vacant since two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Tyson, do you know what?
I know exactly what she's talking about. The, the previous property owner or tenant was operating an illegal activity. He was selling cars there, and he's never, never zoned for that. We took him to municipal court more than once, and I would think this would be an acceptable use as another, another piece of property of the same type on further north on Ann Street.
Say that last part, Tommy, that you just, I missed what you were saying.
There's a rezoning across the street from Lee High School that's a.
Right.
It's a beauty parlor.
Right.
You know, this would be, in keeping, this is close proximity to that property.
I got you. Okay.
There's two, there's actually two salon business to be at Zack, and then to the right of me, at the corner where that new Storage World was built, there's someone just opened a spa right there.
All right.
So for my clarification, the land use doesn't have an objection to it?
They don't have any objection to it.
Okay. Tommy, back when they went through all that rezoning for the Walmart and those restrictions they put on Ann Street, it doesn't extend down to there?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns from the audience?
No. No, he was just emotional to it.
Somebody, somebody said my name. I guess when you were referring to land use, you were referring to the comprehensive plan. So, so yes, sir, we did not object to this rezoning request. Of course, right now, it is zoned for office, and business would be a similar use to office, and this location is, is on a corner. And I know that the comp plan says traditional neighborhood, but when the consultants, when they do these plans, they're mostly looking at the area. If they would actually get out and drive around, they, they would notice that certain locations, though it may look like a house, is actually a business, and that's just, that's, that's, that was an incorrect future land use, and so that, that is a part of a number of edits that we're in the process of making that we're going to bring back to you all for approval to the, to the future land use map. So that's, that's where the confusion is with, with this, so no objections to this.
I got you. Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I got, I got a question for her, too. You're not planning on leaving in this building, are you?
No, sir, I'm not.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving properly second, all those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item is by Jay and Garrett, his son, on behalf of Myers Company Properties LLC. Request to rezone one parcel of land containing point nine six acres, more or less approximately one hundred and fifty feet east of Wetumpka Highway, approximately seven hundred and fifty feet north of Motley Drive, from Ag. two to B two.
Hello, I am Frank Garrett, representing the Myers family. And if you will notice, that there are three lots contiguous there, and what they want to do is, they've got zoning on, on two of the three lots, and the one in the middle is zoned agriculture. So what they are trying to do is get it zoned so they can build a warehouse on all three lots.
Any questions from the commission? Anyone in the audience wish to speak? The motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second. Moving properly second, all those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Next item is by Jerry Kaiser, on behalf of Kaiser Property Management, Inc., requesting to rezone one lot at Two Dunn Drive from R sixty S to B two.
I'm Jerry Kaiser. We own the land to the east of this particular property on the corner of Dunn Drive, and that's the proposed area from there all the way to Ann Street, where the new connect, connecting, connection is going to be from Ann Street to straighten that out across Lee High School. All that's all been acquired there right away, it's been acquired quite a few years ago from the city through this, where the, on just north of the Lee High School. And we bought five of the houses between this Dunn Drive, headed to the west side, and we bought those, all those houses were vacant, and they boarded up and so forth, and we've torn all but one of them down. And then this house on the corner is, is not habitable right now anyway, and the lady called me the other day, and she's wanted to know if I'd buy the house, and I found out that one corner's still not zoned for commercial for the B two. So we're in the process of asking for that rezoning. That would make it contiguous zoning all the way up to the Ann Street and Mount, Atlanta Highway interchange.
That being in the, one of the entrances to Lee Oaks. I think this would be spot zoning.
It, it's, it might be spot in the middle, but it's, it's already zoned everything else to the, to the west is already business, and then across the street, I think it's institutional. And the way this house is located, it's, you know, it is presently zoned, and I did, you know, I don't know, there are, the house to the south of this lot is zoned residential, but, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, along with this one, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
So this is the only one of the five that's not, is that what you're saying?
That's right. Five, we've already, they've already been rezoned, and this is the only.
This is the corner.
That's the corner lot, right.
Any other questions?
As I say, it's not, the reason other houses that, that we bought were vacant and boarded up were because they couldn't back out in, at the Atlanta Highway, they couldn't, the owners and the tenants or whoever couldn't use them, so. And this particular lot here, we do have a left end for the proposed development that's been approved by the, by the city tentatively to get into this. We didn't really have to have this corner lot to do that, but, you know, since there it would be advantageous to have it in there. They're also rerouting all the school buses from Lee High School that are now going to be coming out Bruton Street and going up that street when, when, when all that's redone, redesigned and redone. The city, the county school board has that already approved and drawn and situated, because we swapped land with them on the, on the south side of our property to accommodate that. There will be a new red light put in on Atlanta Highway right behind the church where Bruton Street and all will come in there, so redo that whole intersection through there so the traffic flow would be substantially improved going from Ann Street to the Wetumpka Highway to your federal drive.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other comments, concerns, anything from the audience? Is there a motion?
Second.
Moving properly second, all those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. Six to one.
Next item is by Jerry Kaiser. Kaiser Property Management, Inc., request to rezone two parcels of land containing thirty-nine acres, more or less, on the south side of Burnsdale Drive, four hundred feet west of Mobile Highway from M one and R seventy-five M to an M one district.
The, if I'm not mistaken, the only thing that's zoned R seventy-five, which is that little strip right there on Burnsdale Drive, the rest of the thirty-seven acres is already zoned M one, as it is across the street in the front where Mobile Highway is, that, that there is either business of B two or M one zoning. The, the land to the south of this thirty-seven acres is already zoned. We own that property. It is in, under contract to the Port of Mobile, and they're in the process of acquiring to put an inland port right there on that two hundred and eighty-eight acres. And we, we do own this right here, and, and they're interested in trying to connect it with Burnsdale Drive to come all the way around to that. The person that owns it, across the street over there, is some duplex apartments, and the people that own that are buying this property from, and they are in favor of this. And it's right across the street from that shopping center where Burnsdale Drive is where the, that Win Dixie is, and the property, that little strip coming out to the Mobile Highway there is a, I think it's a Dollar General and a park store already there, and this thirty-seven acres is behind that, that particular property. So in order to access this property, it's going to, you know, have to, that R seventy-five zoning, there's no, no, no houses on that, on that R seventy-five right now, nothing on there.
Thank you, sir. The motion is in order? Are there, I'm sorry, are there any questions or concerns? All right.
Same. My name is Roger Thornton again, and I'm a resident of West Montgomery. The, I heard Mr. Kaiser say that there was, if we can move that back up, there, well, we can utilize that one, that's just as good. There is an apartment complex right there, which is Windwood. It's been renamed several times, but adjacent to those, one to the north of that, where you see Bitford Way and, and, and Winter, that's a, that's a residential community. And on the backside of that, on, on the south side of that is, is Saflong, which is a really big community right there. Now, District Four is, is trying to redevelop that area, those areas. We're trying to bring in green spaces. Well, let's back up. Right there where Burnsdale Road is, if you, if you look just north of that, going up in there, there's right behind that, that space right there, because that's, that's where the, the shopping center is, for Win Dixie. Right behind that is an elderly, where the elderly people stay, some with, and then right behind that is a waterway system, so we don't know what the impact is going to be with that. We need to have a study to see how that's going to impact that area before we move on this. We also need to talk with those residents over there, because I don't think none of them are, are aware of what the plan is for that. We need to do an impact study to figure out how that's going to impact the quality of life for those residents and the future of, of West Montgomery. What we're trying to do with, with the help of our leaders, and we've made some inroads to some investors who are very interested in coming in and putting in green spaces and putting in more residential homes for that area to build it up to where we want the West Montgomery to go. If we keep putting in, and if you, if you look at some of the things over in West Montgomery, you'll see a lot of industrial jobs coming in or companies coming in, and that's going to have a negative impact, whether it's for economic development over there. We need, we need community-related, family-related businesses to come in, so the tax base over there can be, can be widened. With, with the industrial, and I'm a part of the Industrial Development Board, with the industrial, you, it, it doesn't impact positively a community as it should, as we are led to believe. Those dollars that those people work at those companies are taken back out of the community to where they live. We need something over there that's going to keep those dollars in West Montgomery. And the only thing you have right there, the only grocery store, the only family-oriented store over there right now is the Win Dixie Shopping Center. So we're aggressively, I mean, very aggressively, bringing in investors to look at properties over there that's going to have a positive impact and a positive growth over there to, to help aid in that, in that regard. So I would, I would hope the board would, would take another look and, and have Mr. Kaiser do, just like you had the people over at Woodcrest, have him come out and talk to these communities to let them know how this is going to impact their area positively or negatively, so they can be included in the decision that's going to be made over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, one, am totally in agreement with trying to do something on the west side as far as development goes. We've been twenty-five or thirty years trying to do the I sixty-five development corridor over on the west side of town, all over the west side of town. I own multiple properties on the western, on the, on the west, well, the old Greyhound bus station up through there. We're trying very, very hard to do some very positive things over there. This particular part, I guess he understands, I'm not asking for the thirty-seven acres to be rezoned, it's just one strip of R seventy-five. Maybe you could get four or five R seventy-five lots in there. I did meet with Ms. Graham, Ms. Audrey Graham, on two occasions. I met her out there at the site. I discussed with her who I might or might not need to talk to. We talked about the apartments across the street over there and et cetera. Win Dixie had no problem with it. We talked to the people that owned that shopping center, they had no problem. It's not enough, it's not enough space to utilize what's, it's not but a hundred and fifty foot of depth on these properties right there, so it's not really applicable for a green space for families to use. It's surrounded by M one zoning. Behind Win Dixie, the strip between the apartments and Win Dixie is already zoned M one. So this is, if it's spot zoning, it's the R seventy-five is kind of in the middle of some of the M one zoning together. So I'm, I'm totally in agreement with him of what needs to be, try to be done on the west side of town, but this particular little strip right here is, nobody's going to be able to build any residential on there behind all this, this other commercial and M one zoning, so it's, you know, I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to go on and have it all zoned at one thing due to the circumstances of what's already out there.
Sir, does that answer your concern?
It does, it does not. It does not answer the concern. I just think, I just think we need to, we need to delay. I don't think there should be any rush on this unless Mr. Kaiser knows other. I don't think there should be any rush on this unless Mr. Kaiser knows otherwise or the board knows otherwise, but I think we need to, we need to be all inclusive on something that's gonna be, gonna affect the quality of life of those residents that's over there. And that's all I'm concerned about. I mean, I ran for office over there and I plan to run again and, and that, that district will encompass my district which, which is 78. So I, I wanna be, I wanna be very clear that I, I'm not opposed to the right types of businesses coming over there that's gonna improve the quality of life. I just think we need to give it a little more time so we can, we can understand how this is gonna impact those people over there, or I should say us over there in, in West Montgomery.
Jerry, would you explain again? I didn't get all the intended use, the intent of, of the use. Tell us what, what, what you, what the plans are.
The plans are, as I said, the, we have 288 acres behind this and on the south side of that property. Al, a foreign bureau, Alpha owns a little strip in the front and we've talked to them at the, and, and we certainly, we have had conversations. One reason I optioned this land and really of no major significance, but at one time talked to the two-year college system about putting a, a part of the Trenton College out there for a logistics school and they wanted to be in that area due to the trucking and everything else and they were gonna put a nice facility. As a matter of fact, we have got some other property out of that 288 acres to maybe access the, the frontage. And another thing I, I think that does give the, the residents across the streets some protection is when and if whatever's gonna be developed there, it's gotta come back before development plan approval and as y'all well know, there's a lot of options to, to take care of any problems that it might have, but I think to qualify this as some potential residential, it's already, it's already zoned R-75M which it could be more apartments there, but, 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 you know, I certainly wouldn't want to go out there and try to build some apartments right next to an M-1 zone surrounded by M-1 zoning and just, it's just not a probable thing for it to happen. And as I say, it's not but 150 foot of depth to it, so it's not really enough space to say you're gonna put a, a park there. Nobody's gonna maintain a park. They don't have parks in, in one districts, they don't have them, you know, where people has to maintain them and keep the grass cut and keep it looking nice. You don't find that much in, in, in M-1 zoning. I do say that the city does have a, if you're gonna put some kind of a building there, they'll require some kind of, of planning or landscape ordinances and the landscape ordinance with which we're working under right now is pretty, pretty detailed and pretty submissive. And as I say, whatever does happen there, and I don't know how long it will be or any time in the next few years, this property's been sitting there for over 40 or 50 years with nothing on it, so you know, it's not, it's not like people are gonna be jumping up and down. As I built the houses across the street there going into, not South Lawn, but the English Village there, 1965 and this property was over there then. If you remember, it was a trailer park on it one time. So anyway, it's, I think it's, it's the right thing to do to try to get it all rezoned under one, one thing so that we do then can take the whole thing and plan it. And as I say again for the third time, I'm sure is, is the fact, this one little strip is all we're talking about. It's not the, the whole 37 acres, about 36 of it's already been zoned for M-1.
And I, I hear you say, you keep saying one little strip, but I mean from what I'm looking at, it's saying request to rezone two parcels of land.
Containing 39 acres more or less. So it is asking us to rezone two parcels containing 39 acres or more or less. So that, that ain't just a little strip though.
Let me, let me get another map that I've got.
I mean, 39 acres is not just a little strip.
No, it's not.
This is, this is asking what needs to be zoned right here. This is already zoned. So it's a little bit misleading. I saw that when I got here tonight.
Come up to the mic, sir. Come up to the mic, sir, because Mr. Kaiser, would you get to the mic? They're recording you.
I'm sorry. This part's already zoned M-1. This is just the seven, R-75 is 150 feet, approximately 150 foot deep right here and this is already zoned M-1 over here. All of this is zoned M-1. So this is, we're just talking about one little strip right there is all we're talking about. It's misleading in the way it's written up right here because we're not asking to rezone 39 acres. We are, it's probably less than two acres.
I, I, I know exactly where Mr. Kaiser is going and like I said, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the future, what, what, what the future plans is for him rezoning at. I really don't and, and, and I think that's part of the problem. Now, there is, there is a, a house that sit on that property right behind, right behind the Dollar General. There was a model home that was placed there because the developer was gonna, was gonna put some more family homes over there, but what happened was funding. But we're in communication, like I said, we're in communication with some investors that's taking a look at that as well and, and hope to do something, so I, I think if Mr., if Mr. Kaiser.
Let me ask the planning commission, what are we rezoning? Are we rezoning two lots that are 39 acres or are we just rezoning a little strip?
Two lots.
Two lots.
Two lots.
That is correct.
That's what's before the committee. I mean, that's what's on, on the paper, so that's what we have to go by.
Is that correct, Mr. Kaiser?
Ms. Jovin is making a correction.
It contains two lots because on his map that he's showing you, R-75M branches over. It's contained in both lots. So to even the board, you have to contain both lots. That's why it says two totaling 39 acres because there's a smidgen of R-75M in the M-1, only a small portion, like he's showing you, like he gave numbers, 150 plus, that's it.
So we're just trying to clean it up?
That's the main focus. He's cleaning it up.
We're just trying to clean it up is all we're trying to do.
Correct. That's all we're doing, is cleaning it up.
So we're not, we're not rezoning 39 acres?
Correct, we are not. It's only that smidgen.
Then it needs to say that.
That's where the confusion came in.
That's where the confusion is.
You're telling me this, but your ordinance and what you're gonna vote on says 39 acres.
Well, we just said that. He just said it, it's misprinted, so.
Is that, is that? We'll handle that in the motion. We can handle that in the motion.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, motion to approve 39 acres, which is approximately 37 of that 39 right now is zoned M-1 and we're, they're requesting the additional acreage, which is plus or minus two acres to be added to that 37 to get to the total of 39 and we're requesting M-1 zoning for that also.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving properly, second, all those in favor? Any opposition? Six to one.
Thank you, ma'am.
The last item has been withdrawn.
All right. Can we please pass the minutes, please? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Is there a second for the minutes to be approved? Second for the minutes to be approved?
Second. Dragon.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
I wasn't here.